It's now time to call our meeting of the Bullock County Board of Commissioners to order. I would like to welcome to the media and visitors. I'd also like to remind everyone to silence their cell phones and other devices so that we may conduct the people's business without interruption. Commissioner Ray Mosley will give the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, all. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come this morning, Father, to say thank you, Father, for the many blessings, Father, you bestow upon us, Father, on a daily basis, Father. Father, we are so grateful, Father, for your line, as, Father, to be able to arrive safely this morning, Father. Father, we ask you this morning that you give us guidance, Father, give us direction, Father. Father, from the chairman to all the commissioners, Father, that we do those things so pleasing in your sight, Father. Father, we may not all always agree, Father, but, Father, we want to do your will, Father. So, Father, we ask you for your direction, Father. Father, we ask you, Father, to bless our first responders, Father. Father, our fire department, Father, our law enforcement, Father. Father, all the great employees, Father, we have this great county, Father, we ask you to bless them, Father. And then, Father, as we, Father, reflect on last week, Fathers, and I, Father, we just thank you, Father, for our first responders being out there, keeping us safe, Father. And, Father, as school is back in session today, Father, we ask you this day, Father, that you just bless the students, Father, bless the teachers, Father, bless the administrators, Father, allow it to be a conducive learning environment, Father. Father, most of all, Father, we ask you to keep them safe, Father. Father, we ask you to bless this great country we live in, Father, this state, Father, Father, this local community, Father. And then, Father, we don't want to be selfish, but we ask you to bless those counties that are surrounding us, Father. Father, we just ask you, Father, that you give us grace, you give us mercy, Father, for we have those, Father, they're less fortunate than we are, Father. And, Father, as we are reminding it, Father, we could too, Father, be in the same situation. So, Father, let us, Father, be responsible, Father, and, Father, be caring about those around us, Father. Father, we thank you for this day, Father, Father, and then, as, Father, we close this prayer, Father. Let us not forget, Father, our men and women, Father, who are fighting on many fronts, Father, that we can have meetings like this, Father, and we can enjoy the freedoms that we often take for granted, Father. But, Father, we realize they are not free, Father, for these men and women put their lives on the line each and every day, Father. Father, we thank you this day, Father, we magnify your name this day, Father. By thy name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Mincy White, will you call the role of the commissioners?
Yes, Chairman. I being Ms. Mincy White, President's Clerk of the Board of Commissioners of Bullock County, hereby call the role for those on the governing body. All those present shall answer by saying aye. Chairman David Bennett.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Toby Connor.
Aye.
Commissioner Ray Mosley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anthony Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Nick Newkirk.
Aye.
Commissioner Timmy Rushing.
Aye.
And Commissioner Ray Davis.
Aye.
I've determined that we have all members of the Board of Commissioners present. Therefore, we have a quorum to conduct business for the good of the citizens of Bullock County. I know you're the floor back to you, Chairman.
Thank you. Before I entertain a motion to approve the general agenda, do we have any other discussion or modifications desired by the interim county manager or the board?
Mr. Chair, I would like to add the public comment section like we did at the last meeting.
Okay, we'll go ahead and just wait till we get to the actual new business, and we'll do that. Any other modifications? Okay, so at this time, I'm going to ask Chief Financial Officer Kristy King to give our presentation on the current revenues, or current year revenues and expenditures compared to the budget.
Can you move the motion in a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. Guess I did leave that out. There's no other...
Discussion or modifications?
No other discussions, modifications. Do I have a... Where am I at?
Motion to approve the general.
Motion to approve the general agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have... All in favor? We have a unanimous decision to approve the general agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll move forward with our presentation by the CFO.
You face this way?
Whichever way you would like.
All right, well, I'll try and face everybody. Good morning, everyone. I have prepared a report that I actually do every month to send to the commissioners and department heads, so everybody kind of knows where we are with the status of the budget. It is available in the agenda packet, so if anyone wants to look at it later, you can pull it and look at it there. So, I have it organized to kind of divide out the budget by month. So, this is through December 31st, so it was 50% of the year has passed. So, I try to pull all the revenues and expenditures by percentage to kind of see where we are in relation to the budget. Expenditures, you'd expect to be a little bit, probably a little bit less than 50% because a lot of bills come in after the fact, so they're being paid in the next month. Revenues, it really depends on what the revenue is as to whether it comes in regularly on a monthly basis, or if we get it once a year. So, those, you can't just say, well, we've gotten less than 50%, so we're not doing well on revenues. That's not always the case. So, the first graph, first page, is the general fund revenues. A lot of them are around 50%. You can see intergovernmental revenues. We have already collected more than what we budgeted this year. That's because most of the revenues under that category is what comes in from the hospital authority. And we get that once a year, and it came in higher than we expected, higher than we budgeted. So, that's why that one is already so high, and it is not going to increase a lot throughout the rest of the year. Taxes, we are showing at 72% as of December 31st. You know, property taxes are due December 1st, but there's a one-month lag between when they're received by the tax commissioner and when we get them over here in the general fund. So, really, Leslie would have collected a lot more than 72% by the end of December, but we just didn't have that yet. So, that'll go up probably in the 90-something percent by the end of January. Everything else is kind of around 50%. Next page is general fund expenditures. Most departments are right there between 40 and 50%. There's a couple that might be a little bit lower or slightly over. I think public safety function overall is just slightly over 50%. But again, that's not a huge concern. There are some things that might be paid upfront or, you know, later on. So, we're all around 50%, so I think that's pretty good. We're overall at 46.1% of the budget spent in the general fund. The next page is special revenue funds. There are several broken out. The ones that are broken out specifically are funds that have employees and have operating departments out of them. That's the Accountability Court, E-911, Rural Fire, and the airport. The others are just special types of revenue that we receive and can only be spent on certain things. So, they have to be accounted for separately, but they're not really operating departments, so they're not as big a concern. We're not as worried about how we're spending them because some of them are so specific and can only be spent on very few things. So, they're just kind of spent as we have the money or the need for whatever it is that we have that money for. You can see on the revenues there, all across the board, the Accountability Court, we get reimbursed. It's a grant from the state, and that's reimbursed on a quarterly basis. So, we would have only received the first quarter during that time. So, that's why that revenue looks really low. E-911 also, that comes from the state, and we get it every month, but there's, I believe it's a two-month lag time on that, so it's going to look low. And then, we'll kind of make it up because July and August are going to be for this current year. Rural Fire is funded by property taxes, so that's why that one has already come in at more than 50%. And the airport is, that one's, it comes in more regularly on a monthly basis. All right, next page is those same departments, the special revenue fund expenditures. They are all, the operating ones are all within the 40% range, so that's what we'd expect, and that's good. The others, we haven't spent a whole lot of that money, but again, that's because it's just specialized things. Next, I have a list of departments that are over that 50%. Again, these aren't necessarily huge concerns at this point. It's just kind of things to watch. I know, like, HR shows that it's over 50%, but that's because a large portion of that budget was to pay for the workforce study and the management development program, which were both paid for in the first half of the year. So, again, it's not huge concerns that these departments may have spent more than 50% of the budget. Those are just kind of the ones to watch. There's also a chart of overtime, which shows if they've spent more than 50% of their overtime budget. This is, a lot of these just have very small overtime budgets, so it only takes a few hours to use it up. So, if they use that in the first part of the year. Again, not necessarily something to be hugely concerned about, just kind of watch. And I use this during the budget process to try and gauge, did we budget appropriately for overtime, or maybe we need to change something there. But, some of these also, like, I know one department in particular, probation, looks like they're way over budgeted on overtime, but the reason is because they purchased a new software system, and they're using their own staff time to enter the information rather than paying the software company to roll it over into that, which would have cost more money. So, these are just good informational charts, but not necessarily something to say, oh, my gosh, why are they working so much overtime? The next chart is showing year over year, so where are we compared to the previous years? The first one is showing our major taxes, which is property taxes, of course, the biggest one, and then insurance premium tax is something we get once a year. And that just continues to increase a little bit over time. And then, the next is all the other general fund revenues. I split those out from property taxes because property taxes is so much bigger than all the other numbers that the chart looked terrible. So, you can see a lot of these are kind of similar to last year. Some are a little bit higher, some are a little bit lower. If you look at, like, intergovernmental revenues has a weird year last year, and that was because of the homeowners' tax relief grant given by the governor. So, you got a break on your property taxes, but the county still got all the revenue. So, we got a grant from the state to make that up, and that's why last year just looks real weird for that one category. General fund expenditures, again, is same kind of comparison, year over year. Most of them are incrementally higher this year. You can see public safety is the main one that's increased a good bit over the years, every year, and that's due to continuously adding positions for the sheriff, for EMS. So, it continues to increase. But, most of the others are pretty consistent with what has been spent in the previous five years. And then, there's the same kind of chart for special, or all fund types, for general revenue, or general fund, for the special revenue funds that we talked about before, the internal service funds, which are things that basically other funds are paying for services that the county has. One of them is the health insurance fund, one of them is workers' comp. So, that's where that money comes from. It's really coming from other funds within the county. And then, the enterprise funds are the radio system and the water park fund. And so, there's revenues and expenditures for those. You can just kind of see the comparison year after year. So, they can also, you know, there tend to be incremental increases, but most of them are not huge. The general fund does, the last two years has increased. The previous two years before that were very much the same. Just remember, if you're looking at that, 67% of the general fund budget is personnel. So, when we have added positions, that's why that goes up. It's not just spending extra money on wasteful things, it's adding people. So, that's what this report is. If anyone wants to look at it and then have specific questions, I'm happy to answer questions. Just call up to the North Main Annex. They can give you my direct phone number or my email address, and I'm always happy to talk through any of this. I know accounting, and especially governmental accounting, can be very confusing if you don't know what's going on and how things are accounted for, and how things are split up, and how the different funds work. So, I'm always happy to talk through that and have other finance staff that I know would be happy to talk to anyone, commissioners or members of the public. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate what she said about, if you've got questions, please reach out and talk with Kristy. I know that I sat down with the public safety folks week before last, and we went through their budget, line by line. And I can tell you that when you start looking at things, one, their budget is on track, but when you look at the fire department's budget upfront, it looks kind of scary. However, it looks that way because the fire tax doesn't start to come in until about right now. So, it looks like on paper they are way over budget, about 152%. Is that what we decided? However, that's because they don't start to get that revenue to come in until this time of the year. So, that's something that if you just looked at it on the surface, you would blow a vessel in your head. And without talking to somebody and asking questions, you just wouldn't know those things. So, again, you know, we want to be transparent about what's going on and make sure that folks understand what is happening with those numbers. So, please, reach out and ask questions if you have them so that we can get you the correct answers and the whole story as far as what's happening there. So, if there aren't any questions there, we're going to move on. Next, we've got County Engineer Brad Deal is going to come up and talk about Brandon Pond Road drainage. It looks like he's brought backup with him today.
I did. I definitely did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brad Deal, County Engineer. So, we just wanted to give a final report on the Brandon Pond Road project. It has been open, I think, since early December, but we wanted to give a final report on what the end results were and the financial impacts as well. So, initially, the road was washed out during Hurricane Adelia. We went and looked at it, I guess, the upstream area, and decided that the drainage capacity there at Brandon Pond Road was very much undersized. We weren't comfortable with what it was, especially considering the amount of traffic that travels on Brandon Pond Road every day. A lot of school buses, good bit of traffic. So, we went into doing a hydrology study on the area, also, I guess, to design the upgrades, and then we applied to FEMA for hazard mitigation funding, which they did accept. But, I think what we'll do now is we'll get into some of the details of the project, and I'm going to let the Assistant County Engineer Ron Nelson is going to get into some of that. So, I'm just going to turn it over to Ron.
Ron Nelson, County Engineering. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. Brad, thanks for opening it up. I think it's a great opportunity just to kind of walk through and talk through this project. It was, you can never plan for this type of an event, obviously, so you want to have something in place to kind of work through. I think this was a good opportunity for the county to really see from a drainage standpoint, like Brad was saying, maybe some of the undersized locations that, you know, from a hindsight perspective, we've kind of come to see over the course of the last six months, you know, with the onset of Debbie and what we're calling Debbie 2.0, which is the unnamed storm as well. So, this particular project was able to move through our reviews, everything that we went through in here as far as the county reviews and engineering office, and then working closely with outside resources as well, including our partners with federal agencies and state agencies, being FEMA and GMA. But, you can take a look here at this slide. It really gives you a perspective on what the devastation was, you know, what it took to actually rebuild this roadway and this drainage structure right here. So, you can see how it was definitely damaged from a structural standpoint. The safety, the guardrail you can see is damaged, and we had to actually shut this road down. So, Brad moved through with shutting this road down back on August 30th, 2023, and then we just moved directly into qualification-based selection, which would put us into procurement for an engineering and design firm. So, I'll get into more specifics like that, but let's just look at some of the slides and kind of just take a walk through what took place. Okay, there we go. Thank you. So, advanced forward into August, early August of 2024, where we saw Debbie come through. And at this point, you know, we actually already are, we've already gone through procurement for construction. We're getting ready to advance into construction. And I think there were some concerns from the board as to, well, what kind of devastation took place with Debbie as compared to Adelia. So, you can kind of see here on these slides what took place during the Debbie event and after the Debbie event. And then, fortunately, the commissioners were able to allow us to continue into our contract, and we moved through, and we have McLendon Enterprises here. Our contractor was mobilizing, and thankfully, McLendon was able to provide us with these drone photos. It gives you a much better perspective of what actually the site looks like after the Debbie. So, this is Debbie devastation you're getting a look at right here in October when they're mobilizing. Then, we're moving into prepping the site. We're getting everything ready for the installation of the main feature, and that feature being the box covert, double-barrel box covert, 10 feet wide, seven feet high, two of them, 52 feet long, 18 pieces total. Each one of these pieces, as they were installed, they weigh 30,000 pounds each, 15 tons. So, you've got nine on each barrel, 18 total, to get these two barrels for this main structure, this feature of the project, put into place. As we're moving through here, and nobody knew what was going to take place, but we've got November approaching, and we've got, we're fast and furious trying to get the aprons put on, which is the inlet and outlet protection for this structure, wing walls, which you don't see the wing walls here on the left, but you do see them on the right there on the far edges that kind of wing out, literally. And that's what gathers the water as it actually moves through, keeps it in the same flow pattern for the creek there, Upper Black Creek. So, you see the rain event there in Brooklyn, measured 7.27 inches just in the Brooklyn area, and there was more rain. I think it was in excess of 10 inches in other parts of the county where I-16 westbound was actually shut down because of this unnamed second event here. But, it really put this covert to the test. I think we were within about a foot of full capacity, foot to six inches of full capacity at some point. So, it was pushing the envelope as far as what we could expect from this particular covert before it was ever even opened to traffic. Several weeks later, contractor comes back in after everything dries up from the second unnamed storm. Then, we've got the formation of the roadbed here, so it's coming together. The armoring features, we've got Type 3 riprap on the slopes, on the inlets and outlet protection for the box covert structure. And then, the final product, the roadway being put in December 3rd. And then, the end result, which was a Friday, it was a great Friday, it was a wonderful Friday, actually, December 6th, open to traffic, finally. Guardrails, striping, everything in place. 120 days notable for our contractor, 120 days was the expectation from notice to proceed on September 4th of 2024, and in 93 days, they were able to finish this project. So, 27 days ahead of schedule. So, what did we learn from this whole adventure? Well, we know we had 464 days total from closure to reopen. And then, I broke down exactly what those timelines look like as far as 133 days to procure an engineer of record, 147 days to design and permit the project, and that included all of our engagements with FEMA, coordinations with United States Army Corps of Engineers. We also had to get FEMA approval on the H&amp;H, a hydraulic and hydrology report. And those are features that'll actually come into play in future projects as well. Every project we do that gets FEMA funding will require an H&amp;H report. Final plans and construction documents, getting everything all finalized, and we participated heavily here in this office. I think we're able to affect some change as far as trying to maintain the budget, overall budget for the project by actually putting together a lot of those construction documents ourselves and getting into procurement. 91 days to procure a contractor, execute the contract, issue notice to proceed, and then 93 days, like we mentioned earlier, from notice to proceed to construction, and then officially reopen the roadway to traffic. I can't point it out enough, just the 27 days ahead of schedule, and that was key just to get everything all put together. So, getting that ahead of schedule was really good. So, looking at our design and engineering, the procurement period, we moved through a qualification-based selection, and Brad made that decision early on to really get the best engineering firm we possibly could, honestly, just to get a group that could actually deliver this project from an engineering standpoint and help us better understand what the FEMA requirements were. So, moving through the different phases, statement of qualifications came in from all these different firms. We narrowed it down to technical proposal, and we had four firms that actually provided technical proposals, and we moved through the negotiation phase. So, once we got to the end of the technical proposal, that's when we came to the board and said, hey, can we move into negotiations? And the board was gracious enough to allow us to go into negotiations. We went in negotiations with our primary selection, which was Kimble Horn, and we negotiated a fee of $158,000, which hindsight is a very good number compared to some of the other numbers. We're starting to see they're already coming out in late '24 and '25 now, so we got a really good fee there with that group. Notice proceed was issued on January 10th of '24, and the H&amp;H was approved by FEMA May 31st of '24. There, again, the H&amp;H is going to come into play on all future projects that the FEMA opportunity is there. Then, final construction plans were provided June 5th, and then we moved through internally to close out the construction documents, to put it into the Bullock County fashion. It took another month to get that put together and to move into actual construction. It took another month to get that put together and to move into actual construction procurement. So during construction, well, we started off with procurement, procurement, and of course we moved through with a low bid that began on July the 11th. The bid opening was August the 1st. The board approval was provided August the 8th, and then the contract was executed on August 20th. And there again, within that area of time, the month of August, Debbie was going on, there was a lot of uncertainty, a lot of questions, but we were able to continue to, I think within Brad's office as best we could, keep our heads about us and move this thing through and keep advancing and look at it from a positive standpoint, because we knew that the citizens of Bullock County needed this road back open. So we were not interested in trying to delay or postpone or pause or anything. So we weathered the storm as much as the culvert itself and the project weathered the storm. McClendon Enterprises was selected as our contractor. We've got an original contract value of $547,801, and then we had the original completion date, that was 120-day completion date from notice to proceed, which was 120 days. Roadway was open to traffic December the 6th, 2024. There again, reiterating that 27 days early, and the final construction cost after the change order, of course, we had a $115,000 change order we were asking for, but that was an estimate on the, what we thought was going to be necessary. So went to an absolute, this is what it's going to take to complete the project. But ultimately, the final construction cost, in addition to the original 547,801, is 593, 798, and 47, 49 cents. So, and that's yet to be fully paid out, but that will be the final number when it's all said and done. So the FEMA/GMA funding. Our interactions with FEMA and GMA caused us to have to move through several engagements. We met with that group for the better part of February through into May to try to get the H&amp;H satisfied. Originally, and I just kind of put it in parentheses, was a $242,219.55. That number was the original, what FEMA said we were actually due if we were just going to try to do just a replacement with just restoring the two pipes that were there. We felt like that was not the case, and we lobbied very hard and worked with our engineer of record to come up with reasoning and justification for the end result, which was $465,940.78. So we were able to affect that change through our conversation with FEMA, and then we also moved through and we were saying that, well, why would you want to just leave it like it was? We needed something that can be robust and stand the test of time, because, you know, we didn't know at that time that Debbie was coming. But we wanted to plead our case and say, well, from a mitigation standpoint, we want to make this something that we don't have to come back to. We want it to be a great product, a project and a great product for Bullock County for 100 years. I mean, literally, we want this thing to last as long as it possibly can, a good long life cycle. So we're able to get additional money from a mitigation standpoint to improve the location. And ultimately FEMA, the pre-disaster plus the hazard, gave us a $625,685.62, and that's the baseline number that gives us the results of those next few lines, which is the 75% cost share for FEMA, 10% cost share from GMA, and then ultimately Bullock County be responsible for 15%. So if you look at the bottom number that's highlighted, the $219,965.71, that's where we are overall with our design and engineering fee, all the way through construction. That'll give us what Bullock County be responsible for. But in the last two months, we've also pled the case that, well, Debbie came along and Debbie created some problems for us. So went back through and reviewed what the costs were there, and the costs were around $54,601, if I remember correctly. And if we can, and we've already been told that we would get, in that same fashion, 75% participation from FEMA, 10% from GMA, and then we would be responsible for 15%. So we could see the actual overall cost reduced. That'll be the obligation from Bullock County to $174,065. So we're fast moving in that direction with our engagements with FEMA to hopefully continue reducing that cost and get it down to something a lot more manageable. Lot of information, lot of numbers. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I do have a comment. On this project here, I mean, of course, the ones that lived and used this road all the time, they know that this road has blowed out several times over the years. And just for instance, we got some, we got some other issues going on in the county, and everybody gets anxious and say, well, and I hate to, I hate to have to spend the money on people engineering it too. But right before it blowed out, this county spent, I think Brad, if I'm right, what did $190,000 on that guardrail? You remember the guardrail was all bent up?
Somewhere around the neighborhood of $100,000. We had, we had some other locations too that we were working on that.
At the same time, was it $100,000?
Around $100,000.
$100,000 then, and then if, and it blowed out, and blowed out $100,000 down into, well, y'all seen it, it blowed, and they had to take it all back down, and we totally lost that. We got some other issues going on in this county now. The reason I'm mentioning that, some people's getting anxious. But if we'll go by the guidelines of what these gentlemen are presenting you and go through FEMA and GMA and all of that, the county comes out way ahead for everybody to be a little patient. And if not, there's one issue now that we was talking about earlier, that we dumped 50, I think 50, somewhere around $6,000 worth of rock on it just to make it temporary. And of course, the taxpayers have lost all of that because it's in the woods and you'll never regain it. And if we go in there and temporarily fix it and get another rain, you're going to spend another 25 or 30. So there's your another $100,000 that you'll never recoup just for everybody being a little patient. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, sir. And just one thing to add to it, not every project looks like this as far as the process and procedure. Now, the H&amp;H is going to be a mainstay, that's going to be a requirement from FEMA each and every time. However, Brad, and I understand that you can't always go through qualification-based selection, there's got to be some opportunity to maybe affect change sooner, quicker, create a template of something that we can anticipate that's going to show up. So that's what Brandon are also working on, to use this as, from a lessons learned standpoint, that we can actually learn how to proactively see what is coming over time and where we have different weaknesses. So when it does show up, and we do have issues with drainage, we can actually move into something that will deliver the end result sooner than what we see here on this 464 days. So thank you for bearing with us, and I am glad that the county can actually hear what's going on here on these types of projects and really see what took place.
I'd like to thank you and Brad for your hard work. This just shows we've got good people working for this county. And thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Got a question, because this was kind of our first go around with FEMA and GMA. We've learned a lot of, a lot what we can do to shorten this for, I think Neville's Denmark Road. So instead of having that for 65-day, we'll be able to cut that a good bit on this next go around.
That's our, that's our plan at this point, because there is no procurement for an engineer of record. We've already brought them on staff with us back October. So they're fast and furious moving through. We've already got their preliminary plans, they're going back to them today, and we've got a meeting scheduled this week, and March 31st is still our target date to have final plans satisfied, and our engagements with FEMA will continue. So that concludes our presentations for today, and we're going to move into our consent agenda. So I'm going to read off our list of items on the consent agenda here. Number one, we're going to approve the minutes from Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. Then we're going to approve the executive session minutes of January 7th, 2025. We're going to approve a user agreement for the GCIC for licensing purposes to include alcohol licenses and special event permits. We're going to approve and ratify hauling services for Sand Creek Land Construction LLC for the week of December 16th through December 20th, 2024, in the amount of $22,995. Number five, approve the purchase of a Hamilton T1 ventilator from Hamilton Medical in the amount of $20,931. Number six, approve payment to Thompson Consulting Services for four weeks of contracted debris room collection monitoring services in the amount of $427,511.61. Number seven, approve payment to Southern Disaster Recovery for storm debris clearing in the amount of 880, excuse me, 881,031 dollars and zero cents. Approve a resolution authorizing the chief appraiser of the Board of Tax Assessors to approve and disapprove claims for certain refunds of taxes and license fees. Number nine, approve a resolution authorizing the Tax Commissioner to accept certain forms of payment and to waive penalties and interest. Number 10, approve the continuance of a financial advisory retaining services agreement with Davenport and Company LLC per the supplemental letter agreement dated February 28th, 20, or excuse me, 2022, in the amount of $26,045.58. Number 11, approve the continuance of an agreement with Davenport and Company for investment services in the amount of $10,400. Number 12, approve the 2024 recommended contribution to the defined benefit pension plan in the amount of $2,109,571. Number 13, approve a bid from Triangle Sports Incorporated for spring 2025 basketball and, or excuse me, baseball and softball uniforms in the amount of $56,421. Number 14, approve the purchase of computer replacements through Georgia Technologies in the amount of $62,644 to be funded by SLOST. We can approve these items collectively, or we can move any items to new business for further discussion. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move number four to new business, please.
And we can move number four to new business. Are there any other items that we'd like to move to new business? Okay, with the exception of moving number four to new business, do I have a motion to approve these items on the consent agenda?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Do I? All in favor?
Is that collectively?
That's collectively, with the exception of number four. We have unanimous decision on those items. Okay. Believe we're at new business now. Mr. Newkirk, I believe you had a motion you wanted to make here before we got any further?
Yeah, I just want to make a motion that we have the public to speak if anybody's got any issues or questions about these new business items.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second on this?
A second.
Second, all in favor, or any discussion?
We got it every time?
Well, yeah, right now, yeah, but I think we're going to talk about a potential ordinance amendment to.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Make a motion.
We had a motion, we had a discussion, all in favor, got one, two in favor, all opposed, four opposed. Motion does not carry. Okay, moving into new business. Number one, Commissioner Newkirk, going to discuss action on public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, and I have sent an email to the Commissioners, and it's in the agenda packet. I think it's important that we hear from the citizens on the new business section of it and the consent agenda. They, right now, we're getting the agendas like Thursday or Friday, and it doesn't give a whole lot of time for the public to review it and get ahold of their Commissioners and ask questions. So I think we need to make a permanent change for the ordinance, or have a discussion on it at least, and send a sample of the new ordinance, and it's in the packet, and it's also, you know, just something we can review and talk about if anybody's got any questions.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Go ahead.
Say something. And Commissioner Newkirk and I discussed this beforehand. This is just really for discussion today, because it's not in the proper format for an actual ordinance amendment. But if it's something that, that y'all are interested in pursuing, I can try to have an ordinance amendment for the next meeting, a draft, and there's probably a couple of other things that we need to clean up in this particular ordinance as well. So I would, I would address those in the same amendment, and then you could discuss it further at the next meeting, or you could, if you decided what you wanted to do, you could approve an amendment at the next meeting. So, but I don't think we're ready to actually approve it today, but I would, you know, if you, if you want to move forward with it, we can certainly do that at the next meeting.
So would one of you like to talk about what you're actually trying to do with this as far as what you discussed in your email, so that just the public understands how you're talking about formatting this here?
Currently, right now, there is no public comments on the agenda items in the new business or the consent agenda. CDO of Statesboro does something similar to this, where they have a three-minute section before the consent agenda that you can come up and talk about agenda items only for that night only. It would be a sign-up sheet at the beginning outside that, you know, name what's your specific agenda item that you're going to talk about, and then it would be before the, we got it in as the number five section, so before consent agenda, the public would be allowed to get up and speak three minutes, and then we can just go from there. And then we can answer questions during the business section, or whenever the business part of that is brought up, we can answer the questions to the public or, and go from there with that.
But to clarify, this would not be a, just an endless line of people that would not be, they would have to sign up beforehand to come up and speak on these agenda items specifically.
Yes, sir. Sign up sheet, just kind of very similar to what we do now, three-minute time limit, and it has to be about the agenda items only.
Okay.
Yeah, and it also, the way this is worked, I think they would have to identify the agenda item that they want to address.
Yes, sir.
On the sign-up sheet, so it wouldn't just be a, I guess they could identify every one of them if they wanted to, but in other words, they couldn't just get up and just generally ramble about everything. They have to identify specifically what they want to talk about.
Yes, sir.
That is, that is something to look at. If you got a hot topic and you got 100 people that sign up, you're looking at a five-hour meeting to hear three minutes from each one of them. And they, and the agenda goes out on Thursday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday to get in touch with your Commissioners, or if you have, get in touch with the county staff. So, and then we have public comment at the end, and so that's just what I want everybody to understand it. And then if you want to cut that in half, if you've got 50 people, then you can be looking at a two and a half hours' worth of comments. So, just so everybody understands that.
I agree with Mr. Rush, and it seems like it's more time-consuming than anything else.
But the inverse to this, though, is you could come up and speak to a specific topic, but as it is now, they could just sign up in the general, or in public comments and speak. They come up and speak for five minutes, they're going to be there, they could still come up and speak, and they're going to have five minutes.
And that's another thing you talking about, having just before public comments and not at the end, I mean, before consent agenda, and then not at the end, or three minutes during consent agenda and five minutes?
Well, and I think the intent here is if you come up and you speak in, to a specific agenda item, you would not speak to it again in public comments.
Correct. Right.
Is that right?
This proposal would not eliminate public comments at the end, if that's what you're asking. They'd still, they, there would still be public comments at the end, just like there are now.
But Chairman Bennett, I think what he's saying is if they speak on that item during consent agenda, then they can't speak on that item again.
That's right.
That's right.
Yeah, the public comments at the end would not be for speaking on agenda items, because by that time, everything would have already been decided.
Well, like you said, you got to draft it for us to look at, so.
I mean, that's one change we could make. We could make it clear that public comments at the end is not intended to address. We could make it clear that public comments at the end is not intended to address any business items on, on that agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Could we limit the number of speakers on the new business items to one or two?
Yes, I think you could impose limitations. I mean, you know, you have the time limitation, if you want to impose a limitation on the number of speakers on a, on, on an agenda item, I think you could also do that.
Well, if you had fifty people willing to speak, there's going to be some repetition. So if you limit the number of speakers, then that's going to limit the number, or the minutes of the time that it would take.
Do y'all want to do that? I mean, you want, we put a limit, like, two speakers, no more than two speakers on one agenda item? And again, none of this is going to be set in stone, so at the next meeting, we'll, you know, we'll have a draft with suggestions, and y'all can always say, well, we don't like that, or we want to change this.
My thinking is, one man's opinion. Yes, you're going to get some repetition, but I think on most of these issues, you're not going to have a lot of people that are going to speak on them. I think most of the issues that we have today, if we had public comments, most people would not have anything to say about it. I think that you're going to have some hot topics that people will come up and they will speak about. You may have some repetition.
Well, can I suggest this? I mean, it's not going to be set in stone even after y'all approve an amendment. You can always come back and amend it again, so maybe one approach might be not to have limits like that unless it becomes a problem. And if you get, have a meeting where you have fifty people, then that might, you might want to go back and address it, or, you know, even ten people.
So Jeff, will one of the options be, since we're talking about options, will one of the options be just to leave it like it is?
Well, that's certainly an option, yeah.
So since we're discussing, discussing these options, and we're talking about limiting and, and following the city, which is, the city meetings are different from ours anyway. So we will leave, we're putting in options, so that will be, still be one of the options, that we will leave it just like we've been doing it.
Yeah, that's certainly an option.
Okay, if you're going to bring this back to us.
Whatever the majority of the board decides is what, I mean, y'all don't have to amend it at all, but.
Okay.
I, what I'm suggesting, though, if we're going to pursue an amendment or talk about an amendment, there are some things in here that probably need to be amended, updated, I guess, in, in conformance with what we're doing. Like I know the chairman had mentioned, we really don't have commission and staff comments in here, we probably need to put that. Not that I don't think you can do that on the agenda, but I, you know, it's just not, it's not listed in the current ordinance, it's just something we've added over the years. And right now, the ordinance actually says anybody who wants to make public comments is supposed to let the county manager know in writing five days prior to the meeting. Well, we obviously don't follow that practice. So I think we need to amend it, because if you're not having ordinance like this, I think you ought to try to follow it.
Well, what's wrong with just putting general public comments in front of all of it? And it'd be the same thing then, and it'd still be the same agenda, just put it in front, there's consent, and we get started with that.
And not have public comments at the end? I mean, you could certainly do that.
Then it don't matter, because you're going to hear it one way or the other.
Right.
I mean, you want to say it, it doesn't really matter either which way, and then now your, now your list's still the same.
And so you would not have, in other words, at the beginning, if you did it at the beginning, you're not limiting it to agenda items.
It'd be the same, be just like it is now, we're just going to talk about it in front of, we're just going to have it.
Okay. You could certainly do it that way.
I'd be fine with that.
Is that something, y'all want me to?
The same thing.
We could do that, too.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll put that in there, and a couple of other things that we, we need to clean up, and I'll have something for you, I hope, at the next meeting. I, when I, I realize now when I said that, it's a short week, because we're meeting, we should have been meeting last Tuesday, and that's been, so the next meeting's actually next Tuesday. And so the agenda's got to be ready by Wednesday, noon at Thursday, or Wednesday, or what's the?
Tuesday submissions, Tuesday. Agenda items submissions are Tuesday, deadline of Tuesday for agenda items. Yeah.
In that case, it may be the next meeting before I have it. It probably won't be at the meeting next Tuesday, it'll be the second meeting in February. Would that be okay?
Are you saying that you need to sleep tonight?
Well, I'm saying that I have, my schedule this week is pretty tight, but I was going to try to get it done, but if it's Tuesday, yeah, I think we might have to put it off till the next meeting in February, the second meeting. But I have, I'll certainly have it by then.
Can I make a suggestion that maybe, since we're going to be coming up with a lot of zoning matters in our evening meetings, could we bring this discussion back in a morning meeting?
Right, well, that's what I was just saying, I won't have it for next.
Yeah.
The next meeting, I'll have it for the next morning meeting.
You usually have longer meetings in the evening, anyway.
Right, right. I don't believe there'll be any zoning at the next.
I, I don't know, I, I've done, this is just.
Yeah, I'll have it at the morning meeting in February. That's what I'll plan to do.
So do we need to have a motion to table this, or?
Well, I don't really think you need a motion at all, because you're not taking any official action today, you're just given direction, so. I've heard what you've said, and I'll, I'll have something put together, and then if y'all don't like certain parts of it, you, you know, we'll change it.
Okay, so moving on to item number two, then. County engineer Brad Deal got a motion to approve a contract with Kinley Horn and Associates in the amount of not-to-exceed price of five hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred dollars to perform task orders one through four of design services for the FY twenty-five batch one dirt road paving projects to be funded by T-Sploß.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brad Deal, county engineer, again. So as you will see in these next two agenda items, we basically have two groups of dirt roads that were budgeted to be paved, and I think we've got the maps up on the screen. So batch one, which is the first, first grouping that we have, and the reason we did this, we were looking to find the most efficient and, I guess, quickest process to get a lot of these roads paved. As, if you go back to before T-Sploß was approved, we've had various methods we've used to pave the dirt roads, and it's been kind of evolving over the years. And I think we're at a point now where we've recognized that some of the methods we were using in the past were, was not yielding, or getting us to a point where we were getting a lot of these projects finished in the timeframe that we wanted to. So we made some adjustments to the process this time to kind of speed that up, was the idea. So the batch one roads, which I think on the screen right now is the first part of it, which is Floyd Clark Road along with Deer, Deer Run Court, Deer Run Lane, and I think there's another Deer Run Road, I guess, is the name of the other one. So a lot of these roads are, are kind of together and connect to each other, and if you can go to the next slide. So the next part of it is, oh, that's Prater Road, which runs from, and I'm sorry, that first part that I, that we just talked about was off of Highway twenty-four. Prater Road, if you're not familiar with the location, is off of Highway eighty, but it connects to, comes back around and connects to Old Lee Field Road, so it's kind of in the Brooklyn area. And that's a, that's about eight tenths of a mile long, that particular section of the road, if you go to the next slide. So, and then the other part of this batch is Grimshaw Road and Grimshaw Lane, which both connect to Josh Hagan Road, which is currently being designed to be paved right now. And so again, I guess the reason we did this was to kind of speed up the process. We put a very tight timeframe on the contract, so, and that is reflected in, in the cost. We put in the requirements for a two-hundred-and-seventy-day design, which includes acquiring the right-of-way. So we were going to consult out the right-of-way acquisition as well, because I think we're looking at somewhere around two hundred property owners on this batch of roads. It's, it's seven different roads, and obviously some of them connect to each other, but it's about two hundred property owners, which we, we don't feel like staff would be able to acquire all the right-of-way in, in, in that timeframe, so we're going to, our plan is to consult that out. Now, it's not included in the task orders here, because the costs that the, the firms gave us on, on the right-of-way acquisition was a little bit higher than we were comfortable with, so we're going to take that out and look at, we think we can get a better price elsewhere on, on getting that done, but still keeping the same timeframe that we have in there. So the, the whole process that we went through was kind of similar to what Ron mentioned earlier. We had put out a RFQ, I mean, kind of similar to the Brandon Pond Road project, we put out RF, RFQ, got proposals from the firms, we scored those proposals, picked the five best one, or the five highest-scoring firms, and asked them to give us a technical proposal on it that basically told us how the, how they were going to approach the project and what staff they had available to work on the project, and they had to provide a, you know, a schedule for it as well. So it's basically a similar process to what the state uses. In fact, Georgia DOT requires you to follow the process that we use, if there's state money involved in it. Our purchasing policy is a little bit different, we got a little more flexibility in it, because this project is just, just using T-Sploß funding for the project. So we do have a little bit of flexibility, but we thought this was the best way to get a lot of this work done. So I did also meet with Ms. Steinman, the interim county manager, and also Ms. King, the CFO, to discuss our, our funding, because what we had initially budgeted was less than the costs that you see here on, on the proposal. So after having some discussion, you know, we, we do have a good bit of T-Sploß money that has not been used. Some of that's due to maybe underruns on some projects, but also, like I said before, the previous process the county was using on, on dirt road paving took a lot longer, so there was a lot of money sitting there unused. And I think, you know, before T-Sploß, we, the county really only had funding to, to pave one or two roads a year, so it was a much different time schedule that was used on it. So I think our goal here was, was just to get a more aggressive schedule that the public would be, I would say, more satisfied with, and we'd be able to complete the projects a little bit faster. So again, we ended up selecting Kinley Horn based on the, the scoring of their qualifications and also their technical proposal. And then the costs that they have in here is a not-to-exceed cost, so what we pay the consultant will actually be based on the amount of time and, and work that they put into it. They'll, they'll have like an hour, they'll have to track how many hours they work on the project, and, so it could be less than what's here, or, but if they, for some reason, ran into something and needed to go over, we would have to come back and approve a change order for any kind of change on that, so. And I'm trying to think, make sure I have covered all the bases on this, because it's a, it's a large project, and I think we have gotten into everything. One thing I did want to mention was that there will be an additional task order to complete all of the design for these roads, because this, this task order basically gets you through the preliminary plans, they're going to do concept plans, they're going to do the surveying, database preparation, they're going to have some meetings as well, and then we would have to do an, an additional change order to do the final plans, because that's going to depend on how much, what happens during the right-of-way negotiations. So, you know, the right-of-way negotiation is sometimes change the plans, and so that's why we will come back, you know, for an additional change order at that time to finalize the And so if you have any questions, let me know, I think I've tried to cover all the bases on this.
With the higher expense on the engineering, do we think we can have enough funds for T-Sploß to actually finish the project?
Yes, so, and we don't think it's going to affect any other projects at this time that, that are currently, I guess, in the process. Now, that's all based on an estimate, so we won't know specifically what the construction cost is going to be, but, you know, just estimating what it's going to be. Yes, I think, based on where we are at with the T-Sploß funding right now, we would be able to complete projects.
I was just making sure, because last meeting, we added, what, like thirty thousand for engineering there on the Clark Farm Road, plus the construction costs of about three-thirty or three-forty that y'all said possibly, so I just want to make sure we would get all there. Okay, thank you.
Right, I don't think it'll affect that project at all, so.
No questions, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say to county engineer, appreciate the way that you structured this, because I think, and one of the things that I think all the commissions here a lot of times is, T-Sploß, but we don't necessarily move forward on projects fast enough, and I think this will help us expedite that. And so I'd say, we appreciate the, the work, and hopefully we'll see more projects done like this.
Yes, sir, thank you. And that was definitely a lot of the thought that went into this. Like I say, we did include, even include right-of-way acquisition in the original RFQ, but we're going to find, I think, a different way to address that, but with only having one county attorney and my staff is, I've, I've got two other people in the engineering department. Dealing with two hundred property owners is not a easy process to get through, and you also have other day-to-day responsibilities going on as well. So we did put a little more on the consultants in this one, and, you know, it's reflected in the costs, both because of the schedule and amount of responsibilities we put on them, but we think it's the best way to move a lot of these projects forward in a more timely manner.
I'll just add to that really quickly, too, just to piggyback off of what Brad said. He's correct, most times especially, I don't think we've ever dealt with two hundred property owners at one time, but, you know, it can be a two- to five-year process to try to get right-of-way acquired, so, you know, with the introduction of T-Sploß in the last several years, you know, the demand for it's really increased, and so it allows the staff's time to be freed up to work on other things, so it's a much more efficient use of staff's time, which is taxpayer-funded versus T-Sploß, so this is a good use of T-Sploß, I believe, and, and we believe that there's enough funds for it.
And I, can I just chime in real quickly, too? Like Brad said, and I, you know, handled part of the right-of-way acquisition over the years, but back in the day, we've had one or two dirt road projects, and they weren't real urgent, you know, we would just acquire them as we could. But it, with the schedule we're trying to maintain now, I, I, I'm not going to be able to keep up with it, so we're going to have to do something. And I think farming it out to one of these firms, because they will actually, they, they have an attorney that they will use that specializes in right-of-way acquisition, and I think it would be much more efficient and timely, and it would allow, free me up to do everything else that I need to be doing, which I, so I think, I think that is the direction we need to move in, so I would support that, too.
Any other further discussion? If we don't have any further discussion, I'm going to call for a motion.
To approve, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. All in favor? Motion passes with unanimous decision. Next on the agenda, county engineer Brad Deal, motion to approve a contract with American Engineers Incorporated in the amount of not-to-exceed cost of eight hundred sixty thousand five hundred forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents to perform design services for the FY twenty-five batch two dirt road paving.
cost of $860,544.74 to perform design services for the FY25 Batch II Dirt Road paving projects to be funded by T-Splas. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very similar, and I won't maybe run through everything that I just mentioned. Again, it's the same type of project, different locations, so if, Del, if you can go to the next slide. So this is the second grouping that we put together, and it's another, I believe it's another seven roads, which are very close in proximity to each other. So the first part of it is RL Lee Road, which comes off of Old River Road North, which also connects to JR Parker Road and Schuman Road and Club Road, I think is the other one in that grouping. And then if you go to the next slide, which is also off of Old River Road North, not very far away, this is, I think, sometimes referred to as Lakeside Estates, from what I can tell, but it includes the roads of Pike Road, Brim Road, and Bass Court. And so I think, from what I recall, when you combine the two of these, I mean, again, there's over, there's over 100 residences on this group of roads as well. I don't know, I don't have the exact number for them, but it's close to what we had on the other grouping. There's a few differences between the two, they're not exactly the same. The challenge, I think, with this one, there is a railroad track that runs next to Schuman Road, so there's a lot, if any of you are familiar with railroads, they're not very easy to deal with, so that was part of the challenge identified in this one that was maybe not on the other one, although we did have a couple of GDOT permits on Batch One that we're going to have to go through. So again, every road's a little different, and you're going to have different challenges, but we went through the same process that we just went over for Batch One, where we selected the most qualified firm and then went into negotiations, and that firm that was selected was American Engineers Incorporated. All of these proposals that we got on this were, well, not, I wouldn't say all of them, but we got a lot of really good proposals. We were kind of blown away by the detail that some of these companies put into the proposal, where they actually went out and even talked to the property owners that lived on the roads and identified a lot of the issues before they even started designing it. You know, this is just for the proposal, so we feel like it's a good proposal. And it'll be similar to the other one in that we will have an additional task order to do the final plans. This does all the preliminary plans, surveying, concept, preliminary meetings, and then we'll have to have another task order to do the final plans after we do the right-of-way acquisition. But with that, just let me know if you have any questions on it.
Do you think the reason the price is so much higher per mile is because of the railroad track? Because the other one that we just did was four and a half miles for $550, and this one's 3.7 for $860. So is the railroad track the main reason why the price is so much higher?
I think that's part of it. In addition to that, you know, I think every engineering firm is probably going to price it a little differently. We felt from, well, you know, we went off of the scoring system that we had, but we did feel like they had, or American Engineers had the best proposal on that one. They went into a lot of detail in laying out how they would design it and identified a lot of the problems. And I think they are very familiar with the railroad, they've done work with the railroad in the past, so they had a lot of knowledge about that, and that was, I guess, to answer the question, I think it probably did have some effect on it. I don't know that that was all of it, could have been, you know, their rates may be a little bit different than the other firm as well, but we did, we did want to start with them because we did feel like they had the best proposal, and, you know, with, and we do think we have the funding to be able to do it from the T-Splas funds. Any further discussion? If not, at this time, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes with a unanimous decision. Agenda item number four, Special Projects Manager, Mr. Randy Newman. Motion to approve a purchase order in the amount of $35,850 for the demolition of the old GBI building located on Randy Lowery Road for the purpose of a building, a new office building for the Bullock County Sheriff's Office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Randy Newman, Special Projects Manager. I'm nowhere near the amount of money that Brad's been asking for. Excuse me for my voice, but I've got sinus issues. We're looking at building a new office building out there in that property. I don't know if any of y'all know where that's at, it's behind the old State Patrol office. Last year, we built a new evidence building for them, and we used, primarily, I used inmate labor to build the whole building. The only thing we did was hire out the AC and the slab work. And a little bit about that crew, they're a great crew. As a matter of fact, I'm headed out there after I get through, they're working at Cleto Fire Station. They saved us roughly $350,000 last year using that crew of inmates, and I really thank the warden for his help with that. All right, this item tonight, today I'm talking about is basically, it's to build a new building, and what we need to, excuse me, do is get rid of the old building first. It's a dilapidated old block building, all the plumbing has basically deteriorated on it, and it's, they're having to use a porta potty out there for this building. And what we got, I got three bids, basically Marcus and Smith's been working with me, and the low bid was $35,850, and that's to tear the building down, get rid of the slab, all the asphalt, everything. So when we get through it, it'll just be a dirt lot. So basically, that's what I'm asking for on this item. Any questions?
I know Public Works is wide open right now, trying to get roads. Have we possibly tried to coordinate with them on the demo of this building?
Thank you. Want to come say something?
Dick Butler, Public Works Director. Thank you, Mr. Newkirk, for the question. In the past, we have done some demolition. That was several years back when we had much stronger workforce. Right now, our workforce is trying to keep up with our other responsibilities of maintenance. So at this point, I would say it would be more beneficial for us to contract this out, to take us away from the other responsibilities, put something on hold, and it also puts us in a, more of a lag time on some of our FEMA recovery money that we're working under right now, so.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say something, the project Mr. Newman's talking about. I saw firsthand a project that he spoke of earlier that completed, and I can tell you that if you haven't seen it, all the commissioners knew it right out, they did a phenomenal job of taking inmate labor and doing, I watched that project almost weekly, about the day they did when they were doing it, and they did some fabulous construction on that. And I think the inmate labor, one of the things that impressed me is the skill sets that they have. I feel like if they stay out of trouble and accorded skill sets, they can do some good things going forward in the future, so. I just wanted to say that because it was a great job that they did with the labor there. If nobody else has any comments, I'd go ahead and put a motion to Florida. We proceed with the...
Okay, well, any further discussion? Okay, and it looks like we have our motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? And the motion passes with a unanimous decision.
Thank you.
Mr. Newman, don't go far. Looks like you're up a bat again here. We've got a motion to approve a contract with Hawk Construction LLC and Smith Steel Structures in the amount of $26,410 for the replacement of the Cleto Fire Station roof.
All right, with this project, excuse me, we're having inmate labor. They went in and we tore all of the initial offices and kitchen and bathroom out, and we're remodeling that one to add bedrooms for a future. Do you know about when you're gonna?
Whenever they give us something.
Okay. This is going to be a future man station. And the first thing, we've done the demolition and we're actually building walls, but we've looked at the roof on this building, and it's in real bad shape. It's an old metal building that's been added on to twice, so, and there's leaks in it, and it has the old fiberglass, you know, panels inside on the roof that are really rotted and leaking, and the rest of the tin just needs to be replaced. So basically, what we're asking for is just to replace the roof on this building. Like I said, we have inmate labor doing all the interior rework on it right now, so we need to get a roof on it. That's it.
Any discussion here? Questions? Okay, if there's no discussion, I'm going to request a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor? Motion passes with a unanimous decision.
Thank you.
Moving on. Agenda item number five, which is going to come from our consent agenda. I'm going to ask Mr. Dick Butler to step up here for us. This is going to be to approve and ratify hauling services for Sand Creek... Excuse me, I'm in front of my call. This is going to be to approve and ratify hauling services for Sand Creek Land Construction LLC for the week of December 16th through December 20th. And I don't have the, actually, I do have the amount. I believe the amount here is $22,995.
Mr. Chairman, I moved this item to allow myself the right to be accused from voting on this item, personal, this family member that owns this business.
I think, I appreciate you clarifying that for us, too, Mr. Connor.
Any other questions?
Any questions from the board? Okay, if there's no questions, no discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? And we have a unanimous decision on the motion. Okay, that concludes our new business, and we're going to move into public comments now. At this time, I'll recognize those citizens who have signed up to address the board. Once your name is called, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and make your comments. All speakers who are recognized will be allotted five minutes.
We have Lotzak.
Mr. Sak, come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep my comments brief. I'm here this morning to stand in support of Sheriff Noah Brown's request that he's been asking for, for several years, and hopefully the Board of Commissioners will stand behind him. Again, I'm just standing in support, I'm not here to speak for him. I know he's spoken with many of y'all individually, and that is on his continual desire to having a county SRO officer at Statesboro High School. From speaking with him in the past, I know he has a desire to eventually see at least three county officers at Statesboro High School, but I'd like for y'all to consider it, at least at this time, or as you go into budget discussions of including that in your budget going forward, and giving him the presence that he has desired at Statesboro High School.
Okay, I believe that concludes our public comments, moves us into our Commission's staff comments. Ms. Steinman, do you have anything for?
I do, yes, sir. I've placed before you at your chairs the applications that we received for the Well Mitigation Committee, and so from here, I think you all need to decide how you want to go about reviewing and selecting those. Couple of other things that I just wanted to point out as we move forward in the mitigation program is, we need to be thinking about a mitigation manager. We had previous discussions about it. It can be done in a multitude of ways. One is to hire somebody that oversees this entire process, and another is to use a current staff member. So I'm, right now, I'm gathering information from our consultants and trying to see what kind of workload we're looking at, to see if we even have staff that has the capacity to do it. I believe that Bryan County has already appointed their mitigation manager as well as their committee members. And another thing that this person would be doing that we need to start pretty soon is coordinating with Bryan County to issue and select, well, issue an RFP to select a certified well driller in the area that'll be the one that will respond to emergencies should those come up. But we also need to develop and start implementing the well registration forms. Ideally, we would get those out to the property owners by March 1st. So, you know, there's, we need to develop a process for that, whether it's just sending those out in the mail through batches, or how we want to do that. So that's just something to be thinking about. I, you know, I don't have a feel from anybody on what you prefer, but I did want to put that in your mind. Otherwise, open to discussion regarding the applications that you have before you.
Ms. Steinman, now, are you hunting three people to be on the mitigation committee and a manager?
Yes, which, we can have that, the manager discussion at a later date. Like I said, I'm trying to gather a lot of information right now and catch, get myself up to speed, but I will also say that Bryan County did appoint three committee members, but they also appointed an alternate as well, which may not be a bad idea. So if something happens, or somebody drops out, or they're absent for one of the committee meetings, you have an alternate, that's something for you all to consider, but I'll let you make that decision.
So at the end of the day, we hunting five people?
Technically, yes, but the fifth one can be a current employee. It needs to be an employee. They're going to report directly to you all.
And I think if I heard right, just so everybody know, not that I would want to have anything to do with it, but I don't think legally wise a commissioner can be on this board, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct, yeah. I would advise that you choose members that are, have interest in the wells and the well-being of the water in the county, but also can remain reasonable and biased to any extent possible. The mitigation manager, when we do choose how we want to move forward with that, we'll, you know, start doing the well monitoring, see if there's any alarm systems that we need to have out there so that we can negate these issues before they ever even come up. But, yes.
Thank you. So a couple of questions. One, we have 17 people that have applied already for the Well Mitigation Committee. We still have applications that are open, correct?
Yes, the application is still open for people to apply. I can close it at any point, I'm just waiting on your feedback on when you would like for that to be.
And we all agree that our next meeting is next Tuesday, that we'll close the application window next Tuesday? Is that fair?
You gotta do it sometime or another, just about go ahead.
So I think that gives anybody that's still interested in applying another seven days to apply?
Yeah, that would work.
Is that reasonable?
Sounds like we, what everybody's waiting on, anyway.
And then we can go forward as far as selecting somebody, the four people that we need, the three committee members and an applicant.
That's right.
Next, as far as getting a certified well driller, do we need to put out an RFP for that position?
We do, and it's not technically a position with the county, but yes, you're basically putting one on retainer in case there's any issues, but that needs to be coordinated with Bryan County, so it'll be a joint RFP, and then between the two, one would be chosen. I'm not quite there yet, I'm, like I said, I'm still trying to catch myself up on all of this stuff, but we have some time to do that, but Christie and I also need to coordinate with Bryan County to get the joint fund set up so that, to figure all of that out, so we're, we're not quite there yet, but yes, eventually we will.
So with that, do we need an alternate there as well?
We do not, we shouldn't, we shouldn't, but as we go through the process, we'll see if there's any, if we don't get enough submittals through the RFP, then, you know, we might need to find a Plan B, but right now, I think we're okay.
I thought, according to the mitigation plan, each county had their own well driller with three, three well drillers. with three, three well drillers. That was not what the mitigation plan said?
Like I said, I'm still trying to catch myself up on it. I have some action items that our consultant gave to us, and let's see. One of the things is to publish a list of certified well drillers on the website. This would occur after we issue the RFP for well drillers and select the well drillers. Coordination with Bryan County required. So, I'm not saying you're right or wrong, I just don't know at this point. I just know that I need to get with Bryan County to figure out what that process is.
Okay, okay.
So, I think the first thing we need to do is just focus on getting the mitigation committee.
That's right, that's right, yeah. And in the background, I'm trying to gather as much information as I can to provide to you all on what the next steps are. I have action items, but I'd like to be able to tell you how we actually implement them, and just not there yet.
Anything else for us? Ms. Diamond, anything else for us?
No, no. I will keep the application period open until next Tuesday, and I'll just, I'll do like I did this morning and provide you all with what we have, and then we'll go from there.
Any other staff comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a brief, a brief comment that I wanna, just for the benefit of the commissioners, because there's been some suggestion, and I think there's been some public discussion on social media, that the commissioners somehow may have done something illegal or improper at the last meeting when you went into executive session to discuss appointments to the Public Facilities Authority and the Development Authority. But that simply is not correct, and I wanna explain that. Section 50-14-3B2 of the Georgia Code allows the board to go into executive session when discussing or deliberating upon the appointment of a public officer. And I've always interpreted that provision as allowing commissioners to discuss appointments to various public authorities, boards and committees in executive session. Now, I think there's been some contention that only positions receiving some form of compensation qualifies as public officers, but that also is not correct, in my opinion. There's no definition of a public officer in the Open Meetings Act itself, and the Georgia Supreme Court has referred to hospital authority members and development authority members as public officers, and neither of those positions are compensated. So, I think the term "public officer" in the Open Meetings Act encompasses the appointment of uncompensated positions. However, in an abundance of caution, I consulted, I reached out to Larry Ramsey, who's the General Counsel of the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, and he agrees with my opinion. But I didn't stop there. I also reached out to other county attorneys across the state, and I received responses from several that I consider to be preeminent county attorneys and local government lawyers. And not only did they all agree with my interpretation, but they also applied in the same way that we've applied it here. Just as a representative example, they go into executive session to discuss appointments to zoning boards, planning commissions, ethics boards, and animal control committees. So, we're not an outlier on this. We're well within the mainstream of what other local governments in Georgia are doing. Now, it's true that you're not required to go into executive session to discuss the appointment of public officers, just as you're not required to go into executive session to discuss any of the subjects that you're allowed to do so. For example, you could discuss pending litigation with your attorney in a public meeting, but I would advise against it because the purpose of that exception is to preserve the attorney-client privilege. And there are good and sound public policy reasons for all of the exceptions that allow you to discuss certain things in executive session. And they're very, you know, there are a very limited number of exceptions, but that's the reason these exceptions are in the law. And the rationale behind allowing you to discuss the appointment of public officers in executive session is to allow for a frank discussion about potential appointees, or as one of my colleagues put it a little more colorfully, to allow for a no-holds-barred discussion. A commissioner who has something negative to say about a potential appointee may be reluctant to do so in a public meeting. Or if he's not reluctant to do so, it could unnecessarily embarrass the potential appointee about whom the negative comment is being made. So, it's perfectly legal and appropriate to discuss these appointments in executive session if you choose to do so. Now, what was a little unusual at the last meeting, and I'm wondering if this is what spurred this, these comments, the appointments were made at the same meeting after a discussion in executive session. Normally, the appointments are made at a subsequent meeting, and the names of the appointees are listed on the agenda because by then, we know who it is you want to appoint. However, the appointments at the last meeting needed to be made at that meeting because the seats were vacant. They were already vacant. And we obviously couldn't put the names on the agenda because we didn't know at that time who you would want to appoint. So, we just listed the positions and the terms on the agenda. But that didn't in any way make what happened illegal or inappropriate. So, I just wanted to reassure any of you who might've been concerned about that, that you did nothing wrong, and that that's perfectly appropriate if you want to continue that practice in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Any other comments from staff? Any comments from commissioners?
Oh, um, I just wanna thank the staff of the county for handling all the ice storms last week. I know y'all are getting pretty good at handling these disasters that we're getting so often, but I know ice was a new one, but I appreciate all the work that y'all did. And I went to quite a few of the meetings last week, and it was a very well-oiled machine, well-oiled machine that y'all had going up there, so I appreciate that. Also, wanna appreciate the public and the citizens for staying at their house, doing as much as they could around on their private properties and not getting on the public roadways because there was still quite a few cars left a couple of days later. So, I wanna appreciate the citizens for staying around the house and not getting on the roadways and creating a mess. Appreciate them.
I'd like to piggyback on that. I hate to call out people by name, but Dink, and Robert Siemens, Brad, and Ron, and especially the Transportation Department, it seems like they won't let you get your head up. Every time you pick your head up, I don't know, y'all dealt with two floods and a hurricane and a snowstorm that I hadn't seen since about 1973 when I was young, and then maybe. Only good thing I can tell you is when you're on the bottom, you ain't got one place to go, and that's up. So, maybe, maybe you can get up, Rick. Thank y'all.
The left side spoke. Anybody on the right wanna talk?
I think we said everything.
Okay. I wanna echo what they've said, but I wanna add a couple of things to it. First thing I wanna say is, I bragged on some folks last week, and I left the most important person in this room out last, last month when we met, and that's, that's Ms. Venus Mincy White. My transition into this seat as a chairman would've been an utter failure if it wasn't for her assistance. From showing me literally where my office was and where the bathroom was in the building to helping me get a computer and a telephone and everything else, she has made my life much easier here, and I'm grateful for everything that she's done for me. And I can't even begin to tell you everything that she does for all of the commissioners I don't know what time she comes to work, I don't know what time she leaves. I feel like she's here all the time, and I appreciate what you do. It does not go unnoticed. Thank you. Secondly, this ice storm, like folks said, you know, in the last year, we've had hurricanes, floods, an ice storm. The only thing we haven't had is zombies attack.
I'm looking for them.
You know, I was over at the EOC Monday morning, and there were several of the firefighters that had come in that morning from responding from a fire with fatality. They were upset. That was something that they said that they took personally. And I can tell you that being in that line of work, I could empathize with them. That is something that, it hurts when you deal with that. They came in in their, their first out gear, they stripped it off, and they immediately went to work and started focusing on what do we need to do to get ready for the ice storm that's coming? They put their feelings in a box, and they went on to the next thing. It was impressive to watch that, and they were like, hey, we'll deal with that when we got a minute. Right now, we need to deal with this. If you've never seen professionals do that before, it's impressive to see it. They went on like that for three days, and it wasn't just the firefighters. It was EMS, it was Public Works, the rec department, they were all there. It was even more impressive to me to watch Robert and Dink and the rest of Public Works because I went over to Public Works when they weren't looking and talked with some of them. And they said, hey, we're here now, and we're gonna be here this weekend because we're gonna start picking up the trash because we've been closed and haven't been able to get the trash, but we're gonna go out there and start getting trash from the trash collection points this weekend because they're all filled up. So, even after the storm, they were still working, trying to catch up so that people could go back to living a normal life. So, like Mr. Rushing said, you're at the bottom, there's nowhere to go but up, but they kept working. I know the same thing for all the first responders. Hey, the storm was done, well, they went back to work, and they kept doing what they do every day, 24/7. I appreciate what y'all did. Folks may not see what y'all do every day, but we're grateful that you're here. Thank y'all. And I think that's it. So, as my friend down here on the end likes to say, that's another one down, and I believe we have, what, 24 more to go this year? So, that's 24 more opportunities for me to get this right. So, I believe I need a motion to adjourn.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Do I have a second?
Begging.
All in favor? Okay, meeting is adjourned.